Public meetings order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, in the highest court.
Full call please. Mayor Tom Brown.
Here.
Allison Bowman.
Here.
Allison Bischlock.
I'm absent.
Allison McKeen, there you go.
Here.
Mayor Darren.
Here.
Thank you. There is no public comment this evening, so we'll move on to the approval of meeting minutes from the March nineteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting. The council had an opportunity to review the minutes.
Yep.
Any changes or additions? All right, can I get a motion, please?
I will make a motion that we approve the minutes from the regular council. March nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
All second.
Ball please. Allison Bowman.
Yes.
Allison Bischlock.
Yes.
Mayor Tom Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Darren. Yes. Moving on to reports, City Administrator Frank Salvato.
No reports today, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Director Monique Edwards.
Good evening, Mayor Darren and council members. First, I'd like to report on February's gaming industry numbers. On a statewide basis, the AGP was up three point three million or four point one percent. Cribble Creek's AGP compared to January of twenty twenty five was up one point seven five million or thirteen point eight percent compared to February of twenty twenty four. The number was up nine hundred and eighty nine thousand or seven point five, uh, seven point three percent. And year to year comparison was up fifty three thousand dollars or point two percent. Coin in and table drop compared to January was up nineteen point nine million or thirteen point eight percent. Compared to January of, I mean, I'm sorry, February of twenty twenty four, it was down four point two million or two point five percent. And the year to year numbers compared to twenty twenty four are down thirty seven point five percent or no thirty seven point five million or ten point eight percent. For February, Cribble Creek's market share was up to seventeen point two percent, which is an increase over the previous February of twenty twenty four of one point five percent. So we have some good news there. Additionally, I'd like to report on the second quarter device count. Um, the device count for the second quarter of twenty twenty five is up to three thousand and fifty nine devices, which is up ten from the previous quarter, which is three tenths of one percent. If we compare it to the second quarter of twenty twenty four, we're up twenty three machines or point eight percent. And um, so I'm going to report on, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, before we move on to presentations, I would just like to express my gratitude to city staff. We held our career exploration fair at the high school today. And so we had, actually they're in the room. We had Jonathan with wastewater, Charlotte with human resources. Um, then we had Lori and Michelle with heritage and tourism, and then Tracy and Carrie um, with the marketing department. So I just wanted to publicly thank them for supporting that event today. Um, moving on to presentations, first we have recognition of the Zillner's donation of extrication equipment to the fire department. Chief O'Connor.
Let's thank you, Mayor Council. Joe Connor, I'm the fire chief. This is a very happy day. Um, we have been working since I got here a little over three years ago to upgrade some of our long term updates of our equipment. It was seeing the end of its life. One of the major issues was our extrication equipment that we use like the jaws of life to cut someone out of a car when they crash. Unfortunately, we find other uses for them, all lifesaving in nature. When we started, we won a grant from the state for about fifteen thousand dollars and rounding. Um, for kind of an introductory tool. And then thanks to the Zillners a couple of years ago, we bought a ram. Ram goes straight out, pushes doors open and things. When we tested with them, we found that the cutting strength of the original tool we got was not as high as we hoped. The new cars are, the metals are different and it takes more energy to do it. This particular tool can cut, has a cutting force of over ten thousand pounds per square inch. And as we were showing, it works off of a Milwaukee battery. And doesn't require any hoses. It doesn't require an internal western engine. It's just a much better thing. Um, we talked to the Zillners about it. They very generously donated funds for it. We ordered it last year to the tune of fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty five dollars. Um, we got it late, late last year, got it into service by the first of the year, and I have been saying thanking them publicly, but I wanted to do it today um, to thank them for such a wonderful gift. And with that, I have a small presentation for them. Dr. Mrs. Ziller to come up to thank this lady for the chair for us.
Um, for those of you that aren't aware, Steve and Karen are incredible people who make incredible contributions to the community. So I'm, I am honored to call you my friends and I absolutely love you to death. So just thank you guys so much for everything. And I, I know we all agree. Okay, she's awesome. Um, do we have Saul online? Okay, awesome. Next we have the legislative update from Saul Malek. And he is online.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Beautiful. Great. Hello. Good to see everyone. Uh, I wished I could be there in person, but of course Murphy's Law got me and I'm stuck in Denver. So um, Saul Malek, I am the legislative liaison for City Cribble Creek. And um, yeah, just want to give everyone a mid session sort of update, answer any questions you might have. Um, it is active and it has been active this year. We, there's, there's kind of more on the horizon than there is actually on the ground right now. And I can kind of explain that. Um, but we are about two thirds of the way through session. Um, this is a good time for me to present because the budget has just been introduced in the Senate. So one chamber totally grinds to a halt as they get through the budget. Um, while the other chain chamber works and then vice versa, when that budget gets to the other uh, chamber. So it's just, it's a good time for me to uh, present. Um, we have about five hundred and eighty five bills introduced so far out of an average of six hundred and fifty. So that's pretty much on track. Um, I think what's coloring the entire session still is the budget for shortfall. We are looking at a billion plus dollar shortfall. And I think what we have discovered or what we now know is sort of the reason for that is during COVID, we got so much federal funding um, that the state basically was like, great, we have all this money. Let's put all these programs in place. Uh, full day kindergarten and, and other workforce programs and just a bunch of things that um, we're here to boost our economy. Now that that money is gone, uh, we have to cut most of what we did. So it's uh, it's pretty tough right now. Um, we're going through uh, the joint budget committee process and it's, it's pretty grim. So there's no money. That's, that's for sure. Um, we still have a very large Democrat majority in the House, forty three to twenty two. That is one seat away from a super majority and twenty three to twelve in the Senate. That is also one seat away from a super majority. And with Paul as being our governor, um, the policies that are getting through right now are reflective of that political dynamic. So um, I'm not sure if everyone's been paying attention. I'm sure you have, but gun bills uh, are really big right now. Um, anti-gun bills making their way through uh, the legislature. Um, just pretty progressive stuff i- is, is happening. So uh, any questions generally about where we are in session? Great. Um, okay, so we are uh, proactively working three bills. House Bill ten sixty one, um, this is just more money coming out of the Energy Impact Fund that will be used for cities like Cribble Creek when places like Victor Gold Mine eventually uh, stop operating and producing. Um, we are opposed to that bill because we, the, the money goes to playgrounds, which is great. We love playgrounds. Um, but it's, it's continuing to degrade that Energy Impact Fund that um, cities like Cribble Creek can use for um, but can, can apply for grants. So four million dollars coming out of there. And then um, House Bill thirteen eleven, uh, this bill has to do with free play um, and not making free play deductible. We sent the bill to Paul um, so that he could take a look at it and he sent back today that he doesn't think that bill affects um, the revenue we get from the limited gaming fund. So that's good. That's good. I, I'm, I'm happy about that. Um, and then last one is Senate Bill two fifty six, which CML, actually this bill was just introduced on Friday and CML um, brought it up and they now oppose it. And this would, this has to do with trunked radio systems. So these are basically radio systems that are um, dedicated uh, and will always be up and running for emergency services, for, for other services. Um, but that takes fifteen million dollars out of the um, what are we calling it? Sorry. E. That's moving it out of um, the um, Energy and Mineral Impact Fund, which is where the playground money is coming out of too. So that's bad. It's being raided. This, this fund is being legitimately and thoroughly raided. So uh, I believe we are going to oppose that too. I'm not sure if we ha- have voted on that officially, but um, that's kind of where we are with uh, existing legislation right now. So happy to answer any questions there.
Saul, uh, I see here, is there not much been going on with the internet, internet gaming bill?
So I was going to get to that. Um, that has not been introduced yet. Um, that, that's in our prospective bills. Um, so I'll move on to those. The, the first and I'll end with internet gaming because it's probably the most pressing and the biggest issue for us. Uh, the first bill is the Indian Reservation Gaming. We haven't seen the bill yet, but we keep hearing it's going to happen. So we're, we're not really sure what, what's going on, but uh, nobody's seen a draft. Um, we just know that it's still being discussed. Uh, the majority leader in the Senate, Robert Rodriguez, wants to run it, but he didn't run it last year and it's getting pretty late to run it this year. Um, it would be probably an expansion of sports betting for reservation casinos, but um, again, we, we haven't seen any language. So that's still in the hopper. Um, the Bingo Association is coming back with their bill that they've run like, I don't know, at least two, maybe three times. That keeps dying, having to do with nonprofit status, I think, but uh, we haven't seen that either. So I'm still waiting for that. I know they have sponsors and at this point, in order to run a bill like that, you would have to have late bill status or you'd have to have your deadlines pushed. Uh, I've seen who the sponsors are and um, I, they're, I don't know. I, I don't know how to say it. They are um, not the, they're not the sponsors I would pick to run legislation. So I'll, I'll just, I'll just say that. So we'll see what happens with that. Um, and of course, when I see language for Indian reservations, bingo bill uh, or internet gaming, I will send it to, to Frank immediately and he'll send it to you. But um, the last one is internet gaming. This is a very, very big deal. It would allow uh, platforms who right now are doing sports betting um, and, and anyone else who wants to get into it, full gaming, full paid gaming capability. Table games, um, could be slots, could be keynote, could be all of it. So uh, we're watching this one very closely. Um, this could be a very dangerous bill and we know that it's still being floated by a really big lobbying firm. Um, so myself, Blackhawk are keeping very close eyes on this one. Um, again, no language. I am getting in with the president of the Senate on Friday and the speaker, hopefully tomorrow to discuss this. Last we had heard from the speaker's office, she had not um, seen anything or heard anything of late, which is good. Um, but we do know that they're still talking to uh, elected officials and, and other entities, gaming platforms um, about it. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with bills that haven't been introduced or um, are, are in official legislative channels. So happy to answer any questions.
Well, I don't know if I communicated with you. We do have the resolution on tonight in support of the mayor of Blackhawk's uh, letter that he sent to Caesars.
Great.
Council to consider. I did talk to the city manager of Blackhawk and he talked to the mayor. I said, they have a copy of the resolution. The mayor wants the council to consider it. We could talk about that when we get to that item. But he's also talking about drafting a joint resolution against iGaming for all three cities and two counties to consider. And I said, we would bring it to council if they drafted it. So.
Great. Great. No, that's fantastic. And that, when we talked about that, Frank, um, first of all, I talked to the other lobbyists. Gilpin actually lobbied up, which is good. So now we have a lobbyist for Gilpin, um, Blackhawk and uh, the city of Cribble Creek. I, I wished we had one for Teller and for Central, but um, that's just not where we're at right now, which is fine. But everybody I've talked to about us doing a resolution is like, awesome, great idea. Let's get it into official um, formats so that we are on the record. Um, and I think what it made me think is should we think about running a resolution on the state level? Um, basically mirroring what you're doing uh, on a local level. But that's kind of far off. Um, without a bill actually being out there, it's tough. Um, so anyway, just something for you to consider. I, I just, I was thinking about it. And the best way to create as much momentum on our side to stop internet gaming as possible.
Yeah, I just want to bring something else. I, I talked to Aaron this evening. Uh, I know right now we don't think there's a problem with the thirteen eleven, the moving of the money that Paul looked at today. But is that the one I should talk about or the other? Yeah, that's it.
I don't know why the speaker's running this bill, House Bill thirteen eleven, which is why I'm meeting with her. Uh, I just want to talk about it and see, you know, what, what spurred it. Um, so I'll, I'll let you know when I do.
What I'm concerned about with thirteen eleven is you might not see the internet, internet gaming bill until this bill gets on down the road and they attach it. And I have time to speak against it because it's already too late in the session and they won't hold hearings on it. So that's why I think you still have to keep watching this bill because they can attach something at the end of the session that we wouldn't have time to respond to. So.
Yeah, yeah. That, that is a really good point. I'm glad you brought that up. Um, something Mike, uh, the lobbyist for Blackhawk and myself have been watching very closely is um, and we actually looked at the title of the bill because the title of the bill is going to be what uh, dictates its feasibility to attach internet gaming. I'm just going to pull it up right now so that we can go over it. Um, the title is really tight. Uh, it says concerning the deduction for free bets allowed for the purpose of calculating net sports betting proceeds. So if the internet gaming people wanted to get into it, they would somehow have to attach it to um, the deduction for free bets, which I think would be really hard. But I, I don't know. You're the experts. Uh, you understand this stuff much better than I do. So that's just where we thought is in order to put what they want into this bill, it would have to fall under the title, which I think would be pretty tough. Um, I've seen crazier things happen, but I think it's definitely a really good flag, Frank, that we need to watch this every single step of the way and be in contact with the sponsors uh, and stakeholders and just stay, stay really, really tight uh, to make sure they don't end around us. So.
Okay, thank you.
No, you asked a question I haven't so.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, thank you. Yeah, I have nothing.
Thanks, Saul.
Thank you, Saul.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah. Um, I, do you want me to stick around for the conversation around the um, resolution? I'm happy to.
Um, it's up to you.
Okay, I'll, I'll just hang out and if you need me, I'll, I'll be here. So.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. And I'll be coming down at the end of session to do my wrap up presentation. So probably mid-May-ish, early June.
If iGaming passes, you better not show up.
Fair. All right. Deal. Deal. Yeah. Thanks.
Um, we have a presentation from the Teller County Whole Blood Resuscitation Initiative, um, Dr. Sean Keenan.
Oh, thank you. Thank you to Mayor and the council for inviting me here tonight to speak to you. My name is Sean Keenan. I'm a ER doc and EMS specialist and I am the EMS medical director for many of the services here in Teller County. And basically covering the area from Manitou Springs all the way out to Fox and Pass down to Guppy. But um, tonight I wanted to come here to inform the community about a super important initiative that's coming up and also have uh, an ask to help enable this program to go forward. So um, during my time, I spent twenty seven years in the army and retired in two thousand and eighteen. During that time, I was a medical director with special operations and about fifteen years ago, the ability to give whole blood transfusions as close to the point of wounding or injury became a thing in the military. Uh, it spread quickly through the military system and then began to go out into the civilian system. Yet only less than two percent of EMS services currently in the United States carry whole blood. And what we have found through the science, first through the military and what we're seeing is that when people are severely injured, when they're bleeding to death, either from accidents or from medical causes such as gastroentero, intergastro and intestinal bleeding or obstetrical bleeding. What we have found is that replacing people who are bleeding to death with blood as soon as possible absolutely can save lives. And so about a, two years ago, the medical directors in the city of Colorado Springs went on an initiative and they were the first system to put it, put blood onto ground EMS. And over the last eleven months, it started last May, over the last eleven months, they've transfused to seventy three patients, three quarters of which who have survived. They estimated they saved about fifty lives uh, during that time. And currently they are transfusing blood about every seventy two hours into people down in the city. That is enabled by the uh, memorial health system uh, through UC Health. And um, we have an opportunity here because of the UC Health System through Pike's Peak Regional Hospital to be one of the first rural systems, not only in the state, but in the US, and actually take advantage of that. And through the support of the UC Health System, they have agreed to allow their units. And these are relatively precious units of whole blood. And when I say whole blood, what I mean is when you hear about hospital transfusions, generally they'll give you red blood cells or platelets or plasma, depending on what you're missing. But when people are emergently bleeding to death, you don't have time to do those, those tests. And so whole blood is blood that has, that, that is whole, that hasn't been split up. And so it's got everything that you need. It's very closely analogous to what a person will be bleeding. When you look at the Colorado Springs data also, the average age of a person getting these transfusions is forty six. Meaning there are a lot of young people that unfortunately sustain trauma, car accidents, pregnant ladies, those people that are just, you know, unfortunately due to their situation, it, it's not necessarily, it's otherwise helping people who otherwise have decades to live. And so the other thing that we see, although the numbers wouldn't be quite as large, obviously, as in the city, we know that we have prolonged transport times here. When you look at data of EMS across the United States in major car accidents, of people who die from major car accidents, fully forty percent of them are still alive when first responders get there. And what that means is that for some of those people, if we are able to give lifesaving transfusions on the way to the hospital, we know being here in Teller County, going lights and sirens from Woodland Park on a good day, on a good day, you can get downtown in about thirty five minutes. We know that's a long time to be, if you're actively bleeding. So we have an opportunity now to do this. We ran the numbers over the last two years. We estimate one point five to two people per month in Teller County would be eligible to get whole blood. And so what we are looking at, when we look at the demographics, the, the majority of them are in the Woodland Park area, but there are some folks out here in Cribble Creek. But what we did with um, planning with the ALS services, the Advanced Life Support Services, so with Eric Murray for Southwest Teller and with uh, Tim Deist and, and Dave Hancer for Old Brad, we looked at this and we decided probably the best thing to do was to put two units with the supervisory captain in Woodland Park, but they would be able to respond anywhere um, in the, uh, in the county. So it's coming. We're pushing to have it onboard here in Teller County by the summertime. Just got off a meeting, uh, June the first or sooner. But the biggest thing, the, the coolest thing about this is we'll be one of the first rural systems. The biggest disadvantage is we're one of the first systems. What I mean by that is currently insurance does not reimburse for blood given uh, in the pre-hospital side or in the EMS side. They reimburse for traumas that happen in the hospital, but because Center for Medicaid and Medicare does not currently reimburse, most of the efforts to include Colorado Springs was fully stood up with philanthropy and grant money to start. And so um, I want to thank John Barlet, who introduced us to leadership here in the county. And also Krista Musker and her team of the Memorial Hospital Foundation. Because through their philanthropy efforts, they were able to raise money to stay in Colorado Springs Fire. And they have graciously stepped up to say that they would help um, to help stand up our program. So our goal, to sustain this over three years, this includes the equipment to stand it up and the reimbursement for the expected use of the blood is a hundred thousand dollars over the next three years. And so what we are doing, our team is reaching out to uh, donors, both public and private within the communities. And what we have found, given the Colorado Springs experience, is that people come forward and say, how can I be a part of this? How can I contribute? And so I just wanted to bring out for awareness, uh, for instance, Southwest Teller County EMS is going to hold a blood drive on April the fourteenth. Now that blood doesn't immediately go right into the cooler and then get transfused next week. But the, the company that, that sponsors that, By Talent, supplies ninety percent of the blood to UC Health. And so what we're doing is the leadership of this program is going back to the government and saying, hey, the community, look what the community is doing. So Colorado Springs were in a blood drive. They replaced all the units they had used in the first three months, one day of blood drive. And so blood is a precious resource. It only lasts about twenty one days and then they have to rotate it out. So there's a larger, a lot of logistics to go with it. Um, the other thing that, that we're asking is that either public or private entities, if they're willing to, to donate, if individuals want to donate a small amount of uh, financial philanthropy, or if we can find foundations or businesses in the community and mines and casinos and say that, you know, what, we know that EMS, it's very familiar with casinos. Um, but we also know that um, a lot of dangerous work goes on at the mines, heavy equipment, a lot of things. And so this would be a community resource for everyone. But I can tell you from the science, what's out there. By having lifesaving blood as close to the point of injury or close to the point of, of the person that's bleeding and getting that thing started before they even get to the hospital will give people a chance that otherwise would not have had a chance. So anyways, I just wanted to open it up to uh, any. So anyways, I just wanted to open it up to uh, any questions you might have or um, and really just to kinda thank you again for the uh, the opportunity, thank you for the introductions, thank you for the opportunity to present here. And uh, and lastly, if you know of people in the community who may be interested in supporting this effort, then if you could please point them out uh, to myself, uh, Krista or any of the other folks, uh, as we anticipate getting this up and running, so.
So with setting up a blood drive, like say here in Purple Creek, would that be a, a good way to help support it?
Yeah, well, I think um, in general, there are blood drives that happen fairly routinely. And so having that, I think what that allows us to do is signal back to the blood suppliers and say the community has a stake in this, the community is supporting this. And in fact, a- and this is a relatively small community, but in a uh, the example of San Antonio, Texas, for instance, they identified all the people that had, what they're looking for, I mean, every blood type is important, but the one that we use specifically for this is boat type O blood. And so what they did was they, they identified actually a pool of donors and so when the city itself, when the system itself was down on blood, they actually had, they called it initially brothers in arms and comrades in arms. But basically what it was, but they would actually send out texts to people, say, hey, we're getting low on our supply. Uh, but I think messaging that the community would turn out to, you know, to, to donate, absolutely, I think sends a signal back to those suppliers. I mean, at the end of the day, it's a, it's a business and logistics problem, uh, you know, at its heart. But I think this, as it rolls out across the state, is gonna fundamentally change the business case uh, for blood supply, you know, in the state. And uh, and UC Health is leading the charge with that, at least out here. And, and other hospital systems in the Denver area, um, north of Denver. But uh, there is a coalition where we get together once a month in the state, talk about progress, sure best practices, and this should spread pretty quickly. Um, I know some of the other suburbs of Colorado Springs, it's local.
So Frank and I actually met with um, and John Bartlett, once again, doing good things in the county and making connections, thank you so much. So we met with Dr. Keenan um, last Friday and one of my questions was, how long do you think it's going to be before insurance starts paying for it? And so if you wanna speak to that a little bit, why you've identified the three-year.
Absolutely, yeah, so um, there are moves right now. There is a bill in front of uh, the US Congress to actually look at uh, reimbursing these particular services. I think it's probably gonna be about two to three years before we see insurance reimbursing. And even when you see insurance reimbursing, it's, it's not one for one. In general, a lot of these EMS services absolutely um, operate at a loss to provide the, the services that they provide. But when we came up with that hundred thousand dollars, a lot of that was the blood supply within UC Health that we would be using. We anticipate to be, that to be a short-term need. And I think as, as we're able to start demonstrating a need and for instance, the EMS services already said they will charge back to the insurance companies and document whether or not they are getting reimbursed at all or in that gap, and they're gonna push that up to the state. So we'll be pushing that to the state and at the federal level to show that there is a demand. Um, but really, the first system, San Antonio and Houston went online about eight years ago and it has been exponentially increasing since then, but still it's a very, very early uh, in the stages. But um, there is moves nationally to try to get it reimbursed.
Well, and um, you bring up an excellent point, when you talk about the ambulance ride to get down to a hospital, you know, being in a rural community and being up here, I mean, that is truly the difference between life and death.
Yes, absolutely.
In a situation like that, and so um, I mean, I fully support this initiative. And, and if we could have this opportunity in Teller County, I think it'd be incredible. Um, so that being said, as far as potential um, donors, what is the best way to get in touch with you?
Um, the, so the best way is to get in touch with the Memorial Foundation. We have an information sheet uh, that we shared electronically. Yeah, I have a paper copy of that, but we can, we are more than happy, there's, yeah, we're more than happy to forward that. There's a QR code that you can scan, brings you right to a, a form that, that folks can donate.
Just a personal comment, I think I shared it, I ran EMS for six years in a small town, started IVs. People didn't make it to the hospital, even in the rural, on West Texas, hundred miles to the nearest town. And start an IV in the field, it's not whole blood, it's lactated ringers or normal saline, whatever you can get in them. And they don't make it. Because that does circulate oxygen to the vital organs. So you need whole blood to circulate, to keep them alive, so totally in support.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And, and those, I guess, we've got phenomenal uh, fire and EMS services, people that are highly trained. Um, they, we, they have a lot of latitude, they have very generous guidelines, but this is one of those things, I think, i- it's almost the same as having a defibrillator and AED, it's a game changer. Where literally you have somebody that is essentially going to die and you're able to do an intervention. Um, it, I think it's, I, I think it's gonna be a game changer for those people that unfortunately find themselves in that situation.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having us, I appreciate it.
And Krista, I'm sorry I didn't meet you, but thank you for your work with the foundation. It's different world, no, but thank you guys so much, much appreciated.
We need to come more often, so you know the way.
Alright, moving on to new business. Um, agenda item A, consider authorizing Bohannon Houston, Inc. to publish the skate park concrete pad bid information to interested construction companies for replacing the pad. Um, Connie?
She went home sick, Mayor, so stuck with me.
Alright.
So if your council will remember, back in the budget process, uh, when the council were printed in December, we talked prior to that about redoing the skate park. Uh, we did get Bohannon Houston to come out and do us a survey, look at the park and what we thought we needed was do some bores, because we couldn't understand why it had failed the way it had. Basically, it hasn't been used for quite a while because of the failure that's occurred. So we had a company come out, do some cores. Uh, then that company made recommendations to Bohannon Houston and they came up with a couple of options, one was concrete, of course, and the second was paving the, with asphalt and they ended up, and my recommendation is concrete, because we want a permanent foundation and asphalt is almost an annual, you know, but the streets up here with the weather we have asphalt, you're gonna have to maintain it almost every year to keep it so. So they did a design for concrete, basically they taken out about nineteen inches of the current surface and nine, you know, total nineteen inches. We're gonna put in browel and then put a, a base in for the concrete and then the concrete will be the last, I think, six inches with steel reinforcement. So that's the bid spec, um. So that's what we've been working on, Aaron has, I think, reviewed it and made comments and we made some changes to the contract, so I think it's got legal approval and we're asking the council to consider going out for bids and we'll see what we get back.
Um, I just had one, excuse me, one question on the commencement and completion of work. Do you wanna, what's your?
I was just, that's what I was wondering, what's the schedule or, or is this all depends on the putting bids out?
Well, we've got a pre-bid, don't have to, I should have written this down, they'll probably in here. But we have a pre-bid where Bohannon Houston will be here with Steve. Steve's gonna actually oversee the project for making sure everything is according to the contract. And uh, so we'll have a pre-bid and then their bids are due in the city clerk's office. I think it's the twenty-first or twenty-second of this month, so they have a few weeks to put the the bid together and then we'll have it, once it's reviewed by Bohannon Houston, the bids. They'll make a recommendation, staff will be reviewing those also. We'll come to the council first meeting, we're ready and make a recommendation to award. Hopefully that's in May and that gets on June, July, August, September, hopefully to get it redone.
I am here, can you hear me?
Who is this?
It's Connie. Can you hear me?
So my question was, it says um, the contractor shall complete all work within one hundred twenty working days per the notice to proceed.
Right.
And then it says below that, um, time will not be charged during the months of December, January, February, or March. Um, what's up with October and November?
If we get it awarded, they should have it finished. If we get it awarded in May, they start in June, that gives them June, that gives July, August, September. So they should be able to get it to a hundred and twenty days, that's four months, October.
So in the event that it's not, it doesn't commence until after that timeframe, then the time for the contract, it won't count against them if it never mind, I read it wrong, forget everything I just said. I'm good.
In other words, it will be, it will be ready this year.
It should be ready.
By the end of summer.
By the end, by the end of summer.
Yeah, sorry guys, I misheard that, so, okay.
Time to move forward on projects.
Yeah, I know.
So it's taking a little while to get it, but we appreciate Aaron's comments on the contract, because that took a little while to get through and get them changed. But it's a better contract, so we appreciate that.
Alright, any further questions or discussion? Alright, can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion that we approve authorizing Bohannon Houston Incorporated to publish a skate, skate park concrete pad bid.
One second.
Vote please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Right, agenda item B, consider a request for the fire chief to execute the necessary documents to accept a grant to fund extrication equipment, Chief O'Hanlon.
Nice, no, actually, it's a good night. Saul talked about states uh, funding. We have already started to see some of the grant programs offered by the Division of Fire starting to dry up. We lost access to a personal protective equipment grant uh, that we got a lot of equipment early and, early on in the, when I have my tenure here. Um, one grant that remains is the Health and Safety Grant. We applied to purchase the fourth and final piece of the extrication equipment uh, for a nineteen thousand dollar and thirty, no, nineteen thousand thirty-five dollar purchase price. Um, and we were successful in the grant, so this form simply just asks authorization, so I can sign the grant and have them start letting us put the order in. Um, there should be a relatively short turnaround and that will allow us to have battery-powered extrication tools on both our rescue and our primary engine. So I don't anticipate any future purchases in this arena beyond routine maintenance and batteries. So I think we can check this box off and start moving on to the next. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Alright, would you like to demonstrate anything?
I thought I did it already.
So these are, um, they work off of the Milwaukee battery system, so when you buy them at Home Depot, the batteries start to go bad. Well, it weighs about forty pounds, um, all self-contained. It doesn't need a motor, it doesn't need hoses of hydraulic fluid, it has a small hydraulic pump inside. And it's simply a push-to-top thing with, this one is ten thousand cutting, ten thousand pounds per square inch of cutting force, the one we're gonna purchase is a spreader, it spreads thirty-two inches to open a door.
And also, is it about that ten thousand pounds per square inch force? So should be very effective, we've been very pleased with the serviceability of the equipment and I think this is the best.
So cool, that's battery operated.
You've come a long way.
Yeah.
Like if I deliver blood, I remember, we had others, stimulants or stimulants, whatever they were, they were awful. They were glass bottles and we carried them on ambulance and they did nothing but pour water into them, so we've come a long way, I think this is also.
Well, the other disadvantage we saw, I used to run those too, but you have a gasoline-powered engine running and you have a car accident with maybe leaking fuel on the ground. So you always had to be real careful about where you place this.
It's, they're changing.
Yeah.
They're not cheap, but they're changing, so.
This is great, but their battery operates awesome.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, can I get a motion?
Make a motion that we uh, approve the requests for the fire chief to execute the necessary documents to accept a grant for the fund extrication equipment. One second.
Vote please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Agenda item C, consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven approving the award of a grant from the Historic Preservation Grant Funds to below-named resident, entrepreneur, and nonprofits of the city of Purple Creek.
Yeah. Mayor and Council, I'm Camille Croft, I represent for Jay. Um, we're really excited because we got our first grant application, a longtime resident, uh, Randy Price. They live at one twenty-one West Carr Avenue, near Homewoodville in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, they are requesting to replace the roof and add new gutters. They have maintained the house meticulously and tried to keep it in the new district. Uh, it was reviewed at the March eighteenth H P meetings and it was voted unanimously to approve the award grant amount of eleven thousand eight hundred thirty dollars and thirty-five cents with a ten percent match of thirteen hundred fourteen dollars eighty-two cents. We don't have any additional questions, and I'm not sure about.
That's great. I had a question, uh, the amount requested was thirteen thousand one hundred forty-eight.
Right.
See all their bids are.
Yeah, with the ten percent match, it made um, the grant worth portion eleven thousand.
Okay. Well, I just saw all their bids, like all the bids was under that, but they accepted that bid.
I believe so, that's what they agreed.
For twelve thousand three hundred forty-eight.
Yeah. So staff does accept each recommendation and ask council to adopt resolution twenty-five.
Questions, I appreciate the fact that they have maintained the house, I mean, that's awesome, especially their historic history. Any questions or? Well, make it a motion, please.
Make a motion, approve, approve resolution number two zero two five dash zero seven.
I'll second. Vote please. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Agenda item D, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six supporting the city of Blackhawk Mayor David Stelman in urging Caesar's Entertainment to reconsider its stance on internet gaming and backing the city of Blackhawk in opposing iGaming in Colorado, Frank Salto.
We kinda touched on this, so I don't know if you want either read or read the resolution, we also have uh, the mayor's letter attached in your packet. So it's a well-written letter, the city of Blackhawk council is considering a resolution, but we had this sent out to all of us and the whole list of people that the mayor sent this to. I just think um, I'd rather have a joint resolution of all the communities, but uh, the sooner we start getting this out to legislation and the, the uh, the governor, I think, I'm just again concerned that at the end, I understand what uh, Saul's saying about, but the, the the um, legislation that I was mentioning earlier has the word sports betting in it. And this has to do with iGaming, sports betting, it's sports betting company. I, it's really the parliamentarian of the Senator of the House that makes the, I think Saul can correct me if I'm wrong, but from my experience, that parliamentarian makes the decision on whether the, the bill they're trying to attach to another bill is allowed or not, so I don't trust that, sorry. I just, I mean, there's too many things I've seen over the years that legislation happens and you don't have time to react to it. So I definitely agree with Saul, I don't wanna mean, he doesn't know, he, he's there all the time dealing with the legislature. I just have seen acts in the past that we thought something was good and then we end up finding out, oh, it got passed. How did that happen? You know, well, this is how it happened, they got it attached. So I don't know, I just don't like the, so I think I'm recommending that you approve the resolution. I think we work on the joint resolution that I will bring as soon as we get it. But I think we need to support anybody that's against iGaming, because I think it's the biggest community. If, if somebody can go sit on their couch and do roulette or one-armed bandits or whatever they wanna do and they don't have to come up here to game, they can't tell me it's not gonna hurt the communities. It is, but right now, sports betting, I think hurts us, we don't get any money from sports betting. The s- the state gets up to twenty-nine million, this year they got more than that and they had to figure out how to, how to spend it, so they got legislation or the vote done, so they could keep the money. And I don't know, it's just games that are played, and we don't get anything from sports betting, even though the three cities and the two counties, if we didn't, if we weren't approved back in the day to have betting, gaming, they wouldn't have sports. If we didn't, if we weren't approved back in the day to have betting, gaming, they wouldn't have sports betting in Colorado. So, I just think the cities continue, the counties continue to get left out of, excuse me, shenanigans.
I'm really curious to see why Caesar's is supporting.
Because they have the iGaming set up.
But they're, they're gonna be part of Blackhawk and been big supporter of Blackhawk for a long time.
I understand, but they have, they have the sports betting out there, so they think if, they don't think they're gonna lose, because they think what, I guess, I don't know what they're thinking, but. If they have a business, but they're gonna, they're gonna gain more by having iGaming, then what's it to lose for them? And some of our casinos don't have sports betting or the iGaming set up, so, I think. The brick and mortar stores will lose out. I'd be happy to read this, if you want me to read it, or. The community, or?
Yeah, just because it's, um.
Don't read the letter, just.
Just the.
Just the res- resolution, resolution supporting the city of Blackhawks. Mayor David Spelman in urging Caesar's Entertainment to reconsider its stance on internet gaming and backing the city of Blackhawks. In opposing iGaming in Colorado, whereas Caesar's Entertainment has decided to support the legalization of internet gambling. Which could impact the economy and jeopardize the prosperity of Blackhawk. Whereas the city of Purple Creek and other industry leaders and stakeholders rally to protect Colorado's host gaming cities. Whereas the city of Blackhawks, Mayor David Spelman is submitting a strongly worded letter to Caesar's Entertainment. Urging its reconsideration of joining efforts to legalize internet gaming and stand with the city of Blackhawk in opposition. Whereas the city of Purple Creek does not support legalizing, legalization of iGaming. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the city of Purple Creek, Colorado, that. The city of Purple Creek strongly supports the city of Blackhawks' efforts to protect gaming industry and prosperity of all gaming cities.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Can I get a motion please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution number twenty-five dash zero six.
One second.
Vote please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks Saul.
Thanks everyone, and I, just, just one more note on that, Frank, you are right, it is up to the chair of the committee. Or whoever's chairing the hearing to allow whatever language into that bill, even if it doesn't fit under the title. So I think this is a wise, um, just a wise thing to do, looking out for the future, so.
Non-agenda item E, consider awarding the mill and overlay project to Old Castle Southwest Group Inc., D D A United Companies. Um, Public Works Director Dick Annoa is Steve.
No, he had to catch a plane, his. Daughter-in-law is expecting and they had to.
She had the baby at about five o'clock here time this morning. Scotty, Maria, I think is middle name, seven pounds, three ounces. She's about, what did I say, four weeks early, so she's in the queue, but. She's doing awesome.
Thank you, yes.
So you're stuck with me again.
Here we go.
Alright, so, uh, take in your package, you'll see that we did receive other bids, uh, on. On the streets this year, the public communities benefit, we, the council put five hundred thousand dollars in the, uh. For street paving this year for improvements, in the years past, we've had five hundred in, but. Four hundred for street paving and a hundred thousand for concrete work, which is curtain gutter sidewalks. So this fiscal year, the council put in five hundred thousand for street paving and still have a hundred thousand in for concrete work. So this is the low bid, and it's four hundred sixty-eight thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars, which leaves about thirty-one thousand. To be spent on something else, concrete or other patching, uh, seal coat, not seal coating, but crack sealing that needs to be done. Uh, Steve, also, you'll see in his, he's got. Three hundred sixty-five thousand five oh seven on a bid, what he is talking about there. The Galena Avenue from McKinney Street to Crystal Street. He's talking about not doing that if the council so chooses, and he would use that hundred thousand. To do like he did last year, he went into intersections that had failed and he's had the. The city would take out the intersection and then the contractor would pave those intersections. I guess I have mixed feelings, it's really your decision, I think. Completely taking out and removing and replacing that part of Galena would fix that street for. Seven, eight years. Have to touch if he gets new, new hot mix. It's really your decision, I asked him, he didn't have time, he was gonna get to me and it point out the specific intersections. I think the mayor had asked me that question, which intersections was he talking about doing, and I didn't have time to talk to him about that, so. It's, I can't give you any more information about the intersections he would do if he took out this Galena street.
So kind of, I'm not really sure exactly where this ad he's talking, on Galena, yeah, from where's Crystal with Crystals or?
Uh, where.
McKinney goes.
McKinney is by the frame. That we used to live in.
Oh, he used to go to the nursing home.
Remove and replace is kind of what we did, uh, trying to think which, it's on C Street. They actually removed the asphalt, fixed the base and then, and up by the. Grocery store, that was removed and replaced, so they actually fixed the base and then repaved with. Two inches of hot mix.
So that would, that, leading that in there, have it up to four sixty-eight.
Yeah.
And then without showing up, what we have to do.
No, you still have the hundred thousand for concrete, it adds another thirty, thirty-one thousand to that, so he still had, then instead of just. He'd have a hundred and thirty-one thousand to do concrete work or crack sealing or. These streets, so the council knows it's Bison Street to. Uh, to Golden Avenue, Edge Mill and Overlay, B Street to First Street, Edge Mill and Overlay. Bennett from third to fourth, Edge Mill and Overlay, Bennett to Masonic, Full Mill and Overlay. And Galena from McKinney to Crystal, we do the replace.
The Bison to Golden is sixty-six and a quarter coming.
I'm sorry. Yeah, that's sixty-six. Edge Mill and Overlay, it means they just mill against the curves or the edges and then they. They'll overlay from there all the way across the top, so you get a new surface, but they don't mill it all out. Like some of the streets, like Bennett Avenue to Masonic. Up here is a full mill and overlay, that is in really bad shape, lots of cracks.
Second Street or Fourth Street? I guess it'd be second, because B Myers over here.
Well, second, second from Bennett to Sonic, yes. Just like B Street, First Street is Carr, right? Yes, thanks.
So do we have to decide tonight on Galena?
Well, you can't award the bid until you decide, so, we put it off for two weeks, but.
I think we need to do, I mean, we just put brand-new sidewalk in there too, it would be nice to have most of that street done with that brand-new sidewalk.
I would honestly rather, you know, like you said, seven to eight years and that'll be done, I think I would rather see that, and.
Well, and then maintaining it, and I still ask Steve to look at crack, or seal coating. I know a lot of people don't like seal coating because it leaves loose rock for a while and they just shoot the asphalt, coat it with rock. But, that stops the bleeding, you have cracks in your asphalt and that water's getting into the base. You're gonna lose the base, and that's what's happened to a lot of our streets, when you see a lot of alligatoring, they call it, you've lost the base, so you've really got to remove and replace. So.
We've got a lot of intersections.
Yes.
That way.
So if you have some streets out there that are, just have cracks. You can crack seal and then come back over with a mill, with a, a, a seal coat. Which is chip seal, which is a asphalt and then put lock on top of it. And you can't do every street in town like this, mill and overlay, it's too costly. I think you have to look at some seal coat. And you're gonna get complaints, because people don't like loose rock, but if you want to save the streets on ones that can be saved, I think you got a seal coat. And then the ones that are, you've lost, you've got to do something like this, what he's focused on, and I don't disagree with him, he's focused on the main streets. To do the mill and overlay, and that's really good, because you're gonna have those streets protected, especially downtown, and coming into town, you'll have that. Good base, good material down for a good period of time. But.
So, because I know. The Galena project. That was one of the first. Un-safes, just. How are the sidewalks on that section, because they're. They're old.
On Galena?
Yeah.
We're just done a couple of years ago.
That far down, we did.
They did from McKinney all the way to.
Was it from?
The Wildwood Hotel, or the Golden Nugget Hotel now.
I thought it was. Floris.
They did from McKinney all the way to, to the hotel.
Pro- to Prospect and then down Prospect.
As I thought. I thought that first, further east. Cause that was, gosh, I think. First either you were just elected mayor, appointed, Dan was still here when.
It's like six or oh seven, yeah.
Oh, seven or oh eight, yeah.
I wonder if you, you will be able to work with this outfit, because I know that the project on, on Bennett from third to fourth. We got an event or something, I mean, that's, we're talking about the section that Biden has, right? The second street.
Up and down, both sides. Yeah, he's, he's already talked to him about the events, so yeah, they'll, they'll work in Bennett on the event schedule. Cause we have major events this year.
Maybe it's the first street.
Yeah, they'll try to hit it between events, so.
Yeah.
And it's a mill and overlay, but it's like a edge mill.
Just curious, I mean, uh, did All Purpose get the bid or they did?
They did.
Oh, they did, I didn't see them.
Yeah, they're a little higher, this, this was the low bid. So Elite Surface was five seventeen, which was over our five hundred.
Pretty sure it wasn't here. And I saw Pyramid.
Yep.
The Pyramid did the.
Yeah, they didn't, it was Pyramid that I was thinking. Maho Materials was six hundred thirteen thousand. Like I said, Pyramid was five oh eight. And he checked this company out, he actually went and talked to people where they paved before, Steve did, because he had never talked to this company before. Everybody's been impressed, so Steve recommend.
I think we do the same. I think we should, I think we do Galena.
All our streets, you know.
So you know, don't do that.
So we, every day driving that channel, just looking.
Just, just because we have an audience and I, and I like to talk, uh, we did a survey. Bohannon Houston came in, uh, summer a year ago and surveyed all of our streets and they grade your street. From, just like you get a grade in school, everything above seventy's passing, below seventy gets on worse and worse as you go down and. Then they put a price on all of that, and at that time, when they gave us the deal, it was twenty-six million dollars to fix all the streets. So five hundred thousand dollars a year, never gonna get there, because this weather up here, seven years. Is about the limit, if you don't do anything to that street, really.
And they do not provide any grants to the street?
No. Nope, it's on your dollar, the problem Purple Creek has, so I was just talking. A lot of the utilities under these streets, as y'all know, we've talked about it in the past, need to be replaced, because they haven't replaced or done. Steve said fif- in twenty fifteen, he was told to quit replacing pipe. So in fifteen year, whatever, it was ten years, they haven't done any line replacement, they've just been patching, so. Uh, you can't do that, you have to, you have to keep up, it's the same thing with painting your house or fixing a hot water heater. If your hot water heater goes out, you have to do maintenance, and you're not seeing the utilities underneath these streets, you just see the street you're driving on. But some of these streets, we can't pave, because the utilities under have to be replaced first. So, can't just go around town saying, we're gonna pave these streets, you're wasting money. You gotta replace the pipe and then you pave the street, so, he's being very selective on the streets that he's paving.
Um, so we concur with the Galena.
Yes.
Alright, can I get a motion please?
Would we motion this one with, including Galena, or do we just motion?
Just award the bid for five, for four hundred sixty-eight thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars to.
Four corners. Four corners to Old Castle, Southwest City. Old Castle, sorry. I'll make a motion, we award the Mill and Overlay project. For four hundred sixty-eight thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars to Old Castle Southwest Group.
Second.
Vote please.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you, thank you. Agenda item F, public hearing to consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight. Approving a certificate of appropriateness allowable under section one dot five dot eleven. Of the development code for the district museum located at five ten East Bennett Avenue. Legally identified as L five dash twelve, B twenty-four, L seventeen through nineteen, B thirteen. Um, I N C L. Sorry. Um, Bennett Avenue line under existing I M P S adjustment.
Adjacent.
Adjacent to, oh, thank you, L nineteen through twenty-two, B thirteen.
Three.
Purple Creek Fremont addition, planning and community development manager, Camille.
Hello again, I'm presenting on behalf of Jay. We did get a request for certificate of appropriateness from the district museum for a storage shed. Normally, because it's two hundred square feet or less, does it fall under building department review? But because of the location, it is under the H P's purview. This was presented to H P on March eighteenth, applicant Bill Burcall was there. Um, there was some discussion, because it is a tough shed, they're pretty standard, but some modifications could be made. So, the reason why they needed is they're overflowing, I guess, with items from inside the museum and they're using some of those storage buildings out back currently. And they're pretty full. I do know that there's gonna be some additions to the district museum forthcoming, so this is gonna be a temporary structure. Under the building code, temporary is a hundred and eighty days, he couldn't quite tell us if that was gonna be more or less than that. So we did think it was appropriate that H P did make a recommendation for this. Um, with some modifications, they did recommend approval, so we can agree that. We would accept their approval with two conditions of resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight. One would be the placement is that there can be certain property lines to the rear of the building, so it's kind of out of view from the public street. And that the color scheme matches existing storage rooms. That was the recommendation of H P and the applicant was agreeable.
Um, did he give a timeline of, of the bridge? How soon he would. Bill is here.
Yep.
Sorry.
Or could he tell us maybe a date where it will be moved, or do you know yet?
Yeah, Bill, if you want to come up to my microphone, thank you.
For call with the Purple Creek District Museum, um, right away. I mean, it's a tough shed, so we want to order it right away and get it built.
How, uh, how's the, I know we talked about the addition. That you guys were gonna do to the T N T building, or was it T N T, correct, how, how is that going?
It's sixty-eight hundred square feet, the plans are almost done, and then it's fundraising, so, um. I think everybody knows about John Sharp.
Yeah, yeah.
Like this, so that's a pretty good start, but we'll probably have to raise about a million dollars.
Yeah.
So that's good back there, so, right now we'll go out. That seems amazing, that would just, we could, we could take a lot of things that are in the basement, make exhibits, but we don't have. Museum.
Need the other.
So we have all these great things down there, we can't do it, but we just need to make room, we built some shelves a couple of years, last year actually. And organized everything and it did help, but it's just, it's just to the point where it's. It's almost kind of a fire danger, I mean, it really is going down there, we just have too much stuff, and just need to get some. So, uh, this two hundred square feet would go there. Then it's the, uh. The, uh. For publication, people, uh, recommended. For information people, uh, recommended, I was gonna do like something to match TNT, the red light. But they brought up some good points, you know, it's kind of an old, you know, forest shape, structure and maybe.
Hope we see that time, no, I said, really exciting to see that, that was really exciting to see, I hope we get to see that one day.
Oh, extension?
Yes.
Um, so if for any reason it goes past the hundred and eighty days. Is there?
The reason we're doing this is because it's gonna go past a hundred. So this is the reason, we'll go through the certificate of program, it's a hundred and eighty days, doesn't, if you approve it, hundred and eighty days. Doesn't it?
Okay.
So I, do you need to open it to?
It is noticed as a public hearing, I didn't want to have idea of that.
Do I have a script?
So I think that what you've already done is opened it.
Okay.
Mayor has already opened the public hearing, the mayor has taken a presentation from staff and the applicant has spoken. And so now, Mayor, if you simply would like to ask for all those in favor to come forward. And make comments, and then those opposed, and then the board can move to close public comment.
Alright, at this time, is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Alright, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Make that motion, I'll second.
Vote please?
Yes.
Not so much mayor?
Yes.
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 Any further discussion? Wait, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make the motion, we approve. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight.
Second.
Vote please.
Yes.
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 They're pretty quick on those seconds.
We have to.
Hey, Bill, I just want to thank you and the district museum once again for being such excellent stewards of our history. Yeah. It's priceless, so. Great. Um, agenda item G, consider approval of resolution, actually, do I read the agenda item?
Yes.
And so it's twenty twenty-five. Approving a certificate of appropriateness for the construction of a childcare facility of the, um, community of caring.
So these items were advertised for the hearing tonight, but applicants are missing some of their information to process. And to bring the staff for their recommendations, so we're asking to table it to April sixteen, for the next.
Alright, can I get a motion to table?
And, and we want to make sure that the motion is to take, to continue it, table it. Sixteen, and that way we don't have to renotice it, so.
I'll make a motion that we table agenda item number G until April sixteenth, yes. I'll second.
Vote please? Councilwoman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item H, public hearing to consider approving resolution twenty twenty-five, approving a conditional use permit. For the construction of a childcare facility with the community of caring. Ditto?
Same thing.
Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to table agenda item H. To the next council meeting, April sixteen, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Vote please?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item I, public hearing to consider resolution twenty twenty-five, approving the High Country Haven subdivision plan.
Ditto, ditto. Can my motion be ditto?
So, didn't ditto a motion, sorry.
I'll make a motion that we table agenda item I until April sixteen, till twenty-five meeting.
Second.
Vote please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Alright, if that is all we have for this evening, thank you all so much for being here and this meeting is adjourned.